Welcome, everyone, to the City of Middletown Planning Board, January 4th, 2023. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
First up, we'll do a little housekeeping for our transcriptionist. We have an absent member tonight, Ms. Witt. Present this evening, we have Mr. Theron, Fire Inspector; we have Mr. Welch, Building Inspector; and we have our Planning Board Attorney, Richard Krogan. We also have this evening a new member, Richard McCormick. I'd like to welcome him. He is taking the position of Mr. John Numchuck, who couldn't be here this evening, but Mr. Numchuck declined to be reappointed. He has several boards that he belongs to and felt that he couldn't act here properly anymore as far as attendance and everything else, so he graciously stepped down, and the mayor has appointed Mr. McCormick in his position. I'd just like to say that Mr. Numchuck will be greatly missed. He was a friend. He's also was here a little bit longer than me, and he steered me through several applications. Great help, and when I became chairman, he also helped me do that, too. Substituted me on occasion, as well as Mr. Higby has done in the past. So if anybody would like to take a moment to say something, I have no problem going around so that board members can say something. I'll start with Mr. Madden.
Mr. Numchuck was my neighbor to my left when I came here, and he showed me the ropes, and for that, I'm eternally grateful.
Thank you. Mr. McCormick?
I just want to thank John. I know he's been a tremendous asset to the city. I have some big shoes to fill, and I'm looking forward to working with everybody. Thank you.
Mr. Welch?
I miss John. That's it.
Mr. Atkins?
Good luck. Have fun. Enjoy retirement.
Mr. Britto?
John was a great model of a civil servant, and I appreciated his example.
Ms. Houston?
I've served on the board since 2006 with Mr. Numchuck, and I have grown to call him a friend. I think he has an exceptional work ethic, and he's just a great person, and I wish him all the best in his retirement and future endeavors.
Thank you. Mr. Higby?
I guess it's nice to go last because I can just echo all the great things that were said, but John is a great guy, and I wish him all the best in his retirement.
Thank you all. All right, so we'll go back to the agenda now for the Planning Board. First up is the approval of December 7th, 2022 minutes. I need a motion. Mr. Madden, second, Mr. Britto. Discussion.
I can't because I wasn't here.
Yes, Mr. McCormick also. No further discussion. Roll call, Mr. Madden.
Yes.
Mr. Britto?
Yes.
Mr. Higby?
Yes.
And I vote yes. All right, next order of businesses, I have to recuse myself as the chairman. I am an employee of Bell Flavors &amp; Fragrances, who is a carryover from the last meeting because we could not obtain a quorum because of my recusal. This evening, we should be okay, so Mr. Higby has graciously volunteered again to take over my position.
And for the record, this is a public hearing that was held over. From last meeting, the public hearing was opened. A letter was read into the record, so the public hearing will continue tonight as well. The applicant should come forth, set your name and your relationship at Bell, and then give a brief overview of the project, again, for those that weren't here last time.
Sure. My name is Michael Smith. I am the Senior Director of Manufacturing for Bell Flavors &amp; Fragrances here in Middletown. What I'd like to review is our project. Bell Flavors &amp; Fragrances is requesting the temporary placement and use of storage containers, five of them, typically eight foot wide by 40 feet in length and approximately eight feet high, on and within Bell's fenced-in property. Containers are to be used to store raw materials during the reconfiguration of an existing warehouse. There will be no hazardous waste stored in the containers, no flammable stored in the containers. There may be combustibles stored in the containers. Any punctures or spills will be dealt with immediately. Bell has a spill response plan in place, and we will regularly inspect said containers. All the above items were reviewed in the site with the Middletown Fire Inspector on 11/30/22. As a result of this review, the fire inspector made a recommendation to keep a clear path to the gates at the Breton Avenue lot, as noted on overall site plan mark E and highlighted on the tax map 36/1/13, address 58. Bell will comply with this recommendation. We would like the permit to be the longest time allowable by law.
And Theron, I believe that's up to one year.
Okay.
Public hearing is open, so if anyone's here from the public...
Is there anybody from the public that would like to speak on this application? No one here. Okay. Is there anybody on the phone, Martina? No? Anyone online wishing to?
Not at this time.
Okay.
To the board?
Yeah, okay. I'm sorry, go ahead.
I just wanted to clarify that. I'm sorry, I was looking in the code when you were talking. It's 475-30, so it's up to one year, and the Planning Board, at its discretion, may approve more time. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Ms. Houston?
Hi, good evening, Mr. Smith. I apologize, I wasn't able to be at the last meeting. I had had a couple of procedures and had been under anesthesia, so I didn't feel I would be in right judgment to come and make any presentations or questions, but I did watch on the YouTube video, so I would be current. I didn't want to waste your time, but I do have quite a few questions. A few people from the community have come forward to ask me about your proposal and plan requests, so if you'll bear with my many questions with patience. So I know some of this was just covered by Mr. Atkins, but the first question people have is, is it going to increase the smell?
No.
Secondly, the safe storage exists in these external containers, obviously, or you wouldn't be proposing it, but are there ventilation and filtration requirements for those specific containers? Because I think you believe, I believe you said that some of them could be combustible, and I know Mr. Atkins has that covered, but it just, it came up in the questions from the community members.
We'll be using, the ingredients that will be put in there will be in sealed containers, so there'll be no vapors coming off at all.
Okay. No vapors. As well as anti-static protection? Will that be an issue?
I don't see that being an issue, no.
Will your employees have to change their PPE at all?
No.
Okay. So do any of the raw materials require engineering controls to maintain their safety, such as cooling or low moisture? Because I know I already asked about ventilation.
Yeah, no, they won't require any of that.
Okay. And being a company that uses chemicals to make your product, you are familiar with OSHA and the hazardous communication, all the standards that go along with it, but are there complete measures in place that would be equal to or above what you do in your buildings now with regard to flammable, oxidization, explosives, toxic waste, irritants, gases? I know I covered some of these in my other questions. Carcinogens and corrosives, if they weren't properly stored?
Could you repeat that question?
Sure.
You don't need to go through the list again.
Okay. Just what measure, like, do you have every measure in place, and will your measures either be at the same measure as your containers or as your current storage?
Yes, oh, absolutely.
Okay. And then, let me see if there are any others. I had written this right when I watched it last time, so I'm refreshing. The longest time is up to a year, and then you would, he would be able to come back for more extensions?
Yes, he would.
All right.
But I don't think that's their plan.
Right.
It's not my plan.
Okay. And the question also came up about, with fire in mind and employee evacuation, if there were to be a fire in the factory, if, what are you doing for snow removal planning in case there has to be an evacuation of the building? Because these are going to block...
We have a snow removal service that comes during the night when it snows, clears a lot, they'll come during the day, clear a lot. Their responsibility is to keep our lot clear. We have a contract with them that goes through, I want to say, April.
But they're aware of the changes that are possibly going to take place?
Oh, yes, absolutely.
Okay. And so you have a backup plan for that?
Yep.
And do you have any changes in your emergency evacuation plans for your employees?
We won't need any.
You won't? Okay. So I assume that Mr. Atkins already covered most of what I'm asking, so fire trucks can pass around the containers fine, and emergency vehicles, ambulances and such will be able to get in and out. Okay. A couple more questions for extreme temperatures, because the storage containers won't be insulated, most likely, I'm assuming.
They will not.
So will the ranging temperatures affect the combustibility or the hazardousness? I know that's not a word, but...
We actually ran some tests on some of these materials to be sure that the temperature changes wouldn't be, wouldn't impact them, and they will not.
Okay.
These are pretty neutral things.
Okay. A lot of people came to me about the smell, that was, but I figured this would cover that if I asked you all these questions before deciding on how to vote. Thank you for your patience with my questions.
No problem at all.
Appreciate it.
Do any of the other board members have any questions or concerns that they'd like to...
Can you just briefly outline the scope of the work that's being done that necessitates the need for these containers, so we can just have a better idea of how long it's going to end up taking?
What we're trying to do is reconfigure the inside of what we call the ice house. It's a, I really don't want to call it large, but it's a warehouse that we are, we've used for a while, but it's not well configured to, for storing effectively. It's inefficient, and our plan is, is we want to basically empty it out, get the, get the structure that's inside that's not load-bearing, before you ask the question. Get the, that mezzanine out of there and put in rack.
And then reinsert the chemicals that you have in the containers?
Exactly, yes.
So this does not sound like a project that should take in excess of a year?
It probably won't.
Any other board members?
I'm sorry, I misheard you. In excess, no. Sorry.
One more question, but I think it's probably been covered. Will the project that Mr. Madden just asked you about impact the smell when it's finished to the community? Will it increase the smell or decrease it?
Well, I have, it won't make, it will not impact the smell.
It won't impact it?
It's not, it has nothing to do with anything that has to do with manufacturing. It's just pure storage.
Okay. I'm only asking because the public was asking, and I want to make sure all of our constituents are aware of how we made our decisions. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Our public hearing is still open. Is anyone here, anyone here would like to ask any questions or speak on the matter? No? And Martina, no one on the phone, right? Okay. And anybody online?
Not at this time.
Okay, so we're going to close the public hearing.
Go back to the board.
Any board, any, anybody else, any other questions or concerns? No?
Theron, any concerns?
I have no concerns. I've walked the site. We went through everything. Their emergency plans and preparation are one of the best in the city.
Thank you. Walter, any concerns?
No, sir.
Thank you.
Great.
Motion.
Okay, so we'd like a motion for Bell Flavors &amp; Fragrances, 12 to 18 Sprague Avenue, temporary storage containers. Okay. Dave, second? Mr. Britto? Okay.
Roll call.
We'll do a roll call. Okay. Do I have to repeat the...
Nope.
Dave?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Britto?
Yes.
Great. Ms. Houston?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
And what about Rick?
I'm sorry. Mr. McCormick, Rick?
Yes.
Yes, sorry. Thank you. Okay, and I vote yes. All right, so you'll be in touch with DPW and with whoever needs to... Do I have to read anything about the DMU zone?
Well, yeah, you should.
Yeah, I should? Okay.
You're not in DMU.
No, but just the resolution?
Yep.
Okay, okay. So this is a resolution for Bell Flavors &amp; Fragrances. Okay, so the approval is subject to City of Middletown DPW and City of Middletown Fire Department inspections, approvals, and, when necessary, approval of the Commissioner of Public Works. The applicant will obtain all necessary permits and follow the permitting process, codes, and ordinances of the City of Middletown, the County of Orange, and the State of New York, if applicable. In addition, if throughout any of the review process, the project is deemed to require bulk requirement tables, the applicant will supply the said tables through an architect or engineer licensed in the State of New York. Whereas pursuant to City of Middletown Code, Chapter 475, Article 6, Administration and Enforcement, 475-53, the E6, unless work is commenced and diligently prosecuted within six months and completed within two years of the date of the granting of a special use permit, such special use permit shall be null and void.
Okay.
So in other words, you have six months to get it done. If you need an extension of time, come back to the board and request it.
Okay. Great, well, thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Higby, for filling in. Next on the agenda, Marco Antonio Nella Padilla, 9 King Street Eating and Drinking Establishment with Beer and Wine Liquor License. Good evening, sir.
Hello.
State your name for the record and what you plan on doing.
Yes, my name is Marco Nella. I'm the owner of the 9 King Street Sugar Shack Factory. I'm just planning to get a license for the beer and wine for the restaurant.
Okay, thank you. Do we have the mailings, Ms. Tu? Okay. I'm going to open the public hearing. Anyone present wishing to speak to this application, please step forward. Anyone on the telephone? Just two. Anything in writing? Ms. Hanson, anybody online?
Not at this time.
Okay, go through the board for any questions, comments, or concerns. This is basically a business that's in operation in the DMU, approved operation in the DMU, and he is now here as he is, he has to do, come for a request for a beer and wine liquor license from the Planning Board.
It would be, still subject to the SLA approval of it. It's just granting him the ability to have it at the location.
Well, anything changed with the hours or anything like that?
He did not report such. No change in your hours, sir?
No change in the hours.
No change in the hours, he's just looking for the beer and wine license. Anyone else? I'll go back to the public hearing. Anyone present wishing to speak on this application, please step forward. Anyone online, Ms. Hanson?
Not at this time.
Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing. Go back to the board one more time for any comments, concerns, questions? Okay.
Just in the resolution, if you can just make it subject to applicant obtaining the SLA approval.
Yeah, I can do that. My State of New York applicable, I'll add that. Okay? All right. On the resolution for 9 King Street Eating and Drinking Establishment with a Beer and Wine Liquor License, has, what is it, boy? Subject to the City of Middletown DPW and City of Middletown Fire Department inspections, approvals, and, when necessary, approval of the Commissioner of Public Works. The applicant will obtain all necessary permits, follow the permitting process, codes, and ordinances of the City of Middletown, the County of Orange, and where applicable, the State of New York, especially the State Liquor Authority. That's where he, that's where you'll be getting your beer and wine license. In addition, if throughout any of the review process, the project is deemed to require bulk requirement tables, the applicant will supply said tables through an architect or engineer licensed in the State of New York. Whereas pursuant to the City of Middletown Code, Chapter 475, Article 4, Administration and Enforcement, Section 475-53, Paragraph E, Subparagraph 6, unless work is commenced and diligently prosecuted within six months and completed within two years of the date of the granting of a special use permit, such special use permit shall be null and void. Basically, if you can't get your approval from the State Liquor Authority within six months, you should write an extension of your approval to this board, a letter back saying you are still applying, you haven't heard anything back. This way, that'll extend your approval. Okay?
Thank you.
He's already in the DMU zone, he's already been approved, there's nothing else I think I need to add to this application.
When he was approved in DMU, was the current restrictions there as well?
I believe so, as far as waste collection?
Yep.
As far as parking and as far as his hours of operation?
Okay.
You know, what part of the...
And his hours of operation are governed under the code?
Right, and they, when he came, they were actually within those limitations. Okay?
Do we have to include anything about if you plans on making changes to the exterior of the business for architectural review?
I could, yeah. Any changes you make on the outside of the building, facade-wise, we have to go see the architectural review board. It also pertains to signage, any exterior signage you change also goes through that. Yeah, we can add that. He has been, been approved by the DMU, so even his previous resolution would apply.
You need a motion?
Well, I think Ms. Houston has a question?
I was going to put it in the form of a motion.
Oh, so moved. Motion, Ms. Hanson, Houston, and second by Mr. Britto. Discussion? Roll call. Mr. Madden?
Yes.
Mr. McCormick?
Yes.
Mr. Britto?
Yes.
Ms. Houston?
Yes.
Mr. Higby?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda, agenda is Bridgette Simmons for Cross and Bridge Counseling, 81 Prospect Avenue, mental health counseling agency. You state your name for the record and what you intend to do.
Bridgette Simmons. I am the owner and therapist at Cross the Bridge Counseling. I would like to relocate the agency to 81 Prospect Avenue, lower level only.
Ms. Tu, do we have the mailings? Then I'm going to open the public hearing. Anyone present wishing to speak to this application, please step forward. Yes, sir. Please step aside and let the gentleman speak into the mic, please.
I'm Sparrow Tobin, 29 Washington Street, 4th Ward, Alderman. One of our constituents couldn't make it tonight, so she asked me to, or they asked me to ask a question, and I was asking, I was more for the applicant. I know there's stigmas around mental health, and I did check out the website, so I probably know some of these answers, but I was wondering if you could just kind of let us know what kind of populations you're serving and the, if there's any concerns about safety or security or people loitering around at your current business, place of business? And I noticed on Monday nights, you're open pretty late. Do you have any concerns about the noise in the area or how's, if that'll be, if you could just address those concerns, I'd appreciate it.
On Mondays when we are open late, we are seeing children clients, usually from 3:00 after we do our therapy program, where we see on the hour, every hour, about 12 children in different groups. We've never had a noise complaint where we are at all. Our population is mostly, we treat anxiety, depression. We do not prescribe medications, and we don't do medication management. I know that's often a concern. Any of those higher-level mental health sort of cases, we actually refer on to an agency that has a psychiatrist and therapists, all under one roof. We are all social workers, mental health counselors, I have interns as well, therapy assistants, which they've just started their education, they're not at the internship level. Those are the type of professionals that we have. We have been in existence since 1999. It started off as Rosa Counseling Services and was opened by Jeffrey Rosa. We were actually right across the street on King Street originally, then we moved over to Dulston Avenue. Since that time, I've only had to dial 911 twice, and it wasn't for anybody in the agency, it was outside. So we've never really had cause to have, you know, police or ambulances needed at our location.
For the record, while you're talking about hours, would you please state your hours of operation, so everyone knows what they are?
Sure. On Monday, we are open from 8:15 a.m. to 8:15 p.m. Tuesday, we're open from 8:15 a.m. to 6:45 p.m. Wednesday, we're open from 8:15 a.m. to 3:30 p.m. Thursday, we're open from 8:15 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. And Friday, we're open from 8:15 to 3:00 p.m. Typically, we're closed on weekends unless we have, like, an emergency situation that we have to come in to see an appointment.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else from the public, present wishing to speak on this application? Ms. Hanson, do we have anyone online?
You do not.
Okay. I have a, an email sent to us that I have to read into the record, all right? It's actually attention, it's from Angel Santana. It's attention to the mayor and attention to the Planning Board. And it's the subject of 81 Prospect Avenue. My name is Barbara Carroll, and I live at 23 Myrtle Avenue in Middletown. I have lived there for 66 years and have seen the neighborhood evolve, and not all for the better. I received a letter, RE, a possible new tenant in the building next to me. I am greatly concerned about the possibility of Mental Health Counseling Agency being located at 25 Myrtle Avenue. There could be loitering, and someone could be lurking around at night. I work until late in the evening, and this especially concerns me. There could be so many other choices, like in the beginning, Toro Students. They make wonderful tenants. A good mix could be child daycare and Toro Students. I don't think this business should be considered. It only takes one incident, a Mental Health Counseling Agency does not belong in a neighborhood. Sincerely, Barbara Carroll. I'll go to the board for any comments, questions, or concerns.
Before you do that...
Yes.
Councilman Tobin, did that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Ms. Houston?
I have two questions, but I may not proceed. I serve two offices, and this doesn't come up very often, but I am also a trustee for the enlarged city school district of Middletown. Do you have contracts with our district?
No.
And do you plan on it?
No.
Okay, because if that was the case, I was going to have to abstain. So I do have a question from people in the neighborhood, they, and I agree with what Councilman Tobin said about the stigmas going on with mental health, and as a member of the school district, I can't tell you how needed the services are. However, do you treat pedophiles? Because I see you are a play therapy agency as well, but do you treat pedophilia?
We do not. And that's even described on our website. We have a disclosure saying that we don't accept them as clients because we see so many children.
Okay. Thank you.
Just so the board is aware, it is a permitted use in the zone. And I believe the only reason the applicant is here is the building that she was in was sold, so she's in desperate need of a new location.
And I should also add, the appointments are only 45 minutes long, so they come, they are there for their 45 minutes, and they leave. It's not like when you do see a psychiatrist where you're waiting for hours and hours for your appointment. We are like clockwork, in and out.
Thank you.
I have a question for you. Parking is a little bit of a concern in that area. Is it mostly drop-off?
Some of it is drop-off. There's also medical, a lot take medical transportation, so they're dropping them off and then picking them up after their appointment.
Thank you. Thank you.
And as per the application, there's approximately 16 parking spots on the site. And there's also street parking available. And I do know that we've had a conversation that we can't put it in the record because it won't, it won't follow you. But you've had contact with Toro College, and the lot that is next to your building, they'll allow you to use it for any overflow. We just can't put that in the resolution. It's all verbal. I understand they're being good neighbors. But without a written agreement, we can't include that.
Okay.
But the board should know that, and the public should know that.
Of the 16 spots, are a certain number of them dedicated to the lower level of the building and a certain number to the upper level?
The property is considered one, one building. So I think to answer your question, no, it's not designated.
But it does meet the code requirements for the number of spots?
For the building.
For the building.
Building, the entire building. Because we may, there may be another tenant.
But the other tenant can't end up saying that 14 of the spots belong to them?
No.
That would be a landlord tenant issue.
Yeah, that would be something we'd get involved in. Okay, anything, anybody else on the board? Anything else? Let me close the public hearing. And I will go back to the board one more time as we normally do. Any questions?
Aaron, any concerns?
I have no concerns.
Thank you. Walter?
No, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. On the resolution for Bridgette Simmons for Cross the Bridge Counseling, 81 Prospect Avenue, mental health counseling agency. Hours of operation will be, as the application stated, Monday, 8:15 a.m. to 8:15 p.m. Tuesday, 8:15 a.m. to 6:45 p.m. Wednesday, 8:15 a.m. to 3:30 p.m. Excuse me. Thursday hours will be 8:15 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Friday hours will be 8:15 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. And of course, will be subject to the City of Middletown DPW and City of Middletown Fire Department inspections, approvals, and when necessary, approval of Commissioner Public Works. The applicant will obtain all necessary permits and follow the permitting process, codes, and ordinances of the City of Middletown, the County of Orange, and the State of New York, if applicable. In addition, if throughout any of the review process the project is deemed to require bulk requirement tables, the applicant will supply said tables through an architect or engineer licensed in the state of New York. Whereas pursuant to City of Code, City of Middletown Code, Chapter 475, Article 4, Administration and Enforcement, Section 475-53, Paragraph E, Subparagraph 6, unless work is commenced and diligently prosecuted within six months and completed within two years of the date of the granting of a special use permit, such special use permit shall be null and void. If for some reason you can't get in the facility in a six-month period, you must send us a letter stating why you need an extension for your approval, or else you'll lose your approval.
Okay.
And it's not in the DMU, so that is the resolution that is necessary. I need a motion. Mr. Madden? Mr. Britto, second? Discussion? Roll call. Mr. Madden?
Yes.
Mr. McCormick?
Yes.
Mr. Britto?
Yes.
Ms. Houston?
Yes.
Mr. Higby?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Good luck.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, Tarsha Lyons, 119 to 143 Dulson Avenue, Suite 22, specialty clothing shop. How you doing?
I'm fine.
State your name for the record and what you plan on doing.
My name is Tarsha Lyons, and I have a shop. A lot of my items are handmade.
Can you just talk a little bit louder into the microphone, please?
Again, my name is Tarsha Lyons. I do have apparel, but I also customize items. A lot of items are handmade, jewelry, earrings. And I do, like I said, footwear, customizations, clothing. I'm sorry, I'm nervous. Oh, my God.
Take your time.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Two, do we have our mailings? Okay. We're going to open the public hearing. Anyone present wishing to speak on this application, please step forward. Ms. Two, do we have anything in writing? Anyone on the telephone? Ms. Hanson, do we have anyone online?
Not at this time.
Okay, I'm going to go to the board for any questions, comments, or concerns. Just keep in mind that this store is located in the Shoprite Plaza on Dulson Avenue. So parking is not our concern, not our issue. And they're controlled by the real estate or the property management of that facility. No other questions? Go back to the public. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Madden.
Hours of operation?
So, oh, let me?
Sure.
So Mondays and Tuesdays, I'm closed. Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, from 11:00 to 6:00. Saturday, 10:00 to 7:00, and Sunday, 12:00 to 5:00.
Okay, bear with me, Ms. Lyons.
No problem.
Wednesday through Friday, 11:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m.?
Yes.
Then you had 10:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. What day is that?
Saturday.
That's Saturday. Sunday?
12:00 to 5:00.
12:00 to 5:00. And Monday and Tuesday, closed?
Yes.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? I'll go back to the public one more time for anyone wishing to address this application, please step forward. Going to close the public hearing. Board members, comments, questions? Concerns?
Mr. Atkins?
I've done a complete fire inspection there. All good. That building is fully sprinkled, fully fire alarm. Everything's good there.
Thank you.
She's all set up and ready to go. She's good to go.
Great. Mr. Welsh?
I concur with Aaron.
Thank you.
Okay. On the resolution for Tarsha Lyons, 119 to 143 Dulson Avenue, Suite 22, specialty clothing shop. Hours of operation to be Monday and Tuesday closed, Wednesday through Friday, 11:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Saturday, 10:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Sunday, 12:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m. Subject to the City of Middletown DPW and the City of Middletown Fire Department inspections, approvals, and when necessary, approval of the Commissioner Public Works. The applicant will obtain any and all permits and follow the permitting process, codes and ordinances of the City of Middletown, the County of Orange, and the State of New York, if applicable. In addition, if throughout any of the review process the project is deemed to require bulk requirement tables, the applicant will supply said tables through an architect or engineer licensed in the state of New York. Whereas pursuant to the City of Middletown Code, Chapter 475, Article 4, Administration and Enforcement, Section 475-53, Paragraph E, Subparagraph 6, unless work is commenced and diligently prosecuted within six months and completed within two years of the date of the granting of a special use permit, such special use permit shall be null and void. So within six months, if you're not up and running, full bore, having problems getting started, please send us a letter notifying us of your need to extend your approval. This way, you won't lose your approval.
Okay.
Okay? All right.
And she wants me to mention? Yeah, 33B as in boy, 33B. That's the actual suite number.
That's the suite number, 33B?
Oh, okay.
The address, but it's 33B as in boy.
Suite 3B, not 22.
33B.
33.
33B. Sorry?
No.
Okay, we have, for some reason or another, we have Suite 22. All right, so let the director reflect that we're talking about 119 to 143 Dulson Avenue, Suite 33B as in boy.
Yep. That's it, yeah.
Okay, that's fine. All right. I need a motion?
Tell me.
Ms. Houston, I need a second. Mr. Britto? Discussion? Roll call. Mr. Madden?
Yes.
Mr. McCormick?
Yes.
Mr. Britto?
Yes.
Ms. Houston?
Yes.
Mr. Higby?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Thank you.
With the DPW. Thank you. And just for the record, too, I just want to add into 81 Prospect Avenue is that in the resolution, we're going to add any licensing that is required for your facility for whatever your therapists need or have, need to be on display. And each therapist needs to have that certification and/or that license. Okay? Sorry, I forgot that. Okay. Next up is Eva Flores, 302 North Street, car repair slash sale. Good evening. How you doing?
Good evening.
State your name for the record and what you plan on doing.
I'm Leila Castro Flores. I'm here for my mom.
Okay.
She couldn't make it tonight. She just wanted to reopen her mechanic shop.
Okay. So is she?
And also to sell cars there, too.
Okay. Ms. Two, do we have the mailings? Okay. Then I'm going to open the public hearing. Anyone present wishing to speak to this application, please step forward. Ms. Two, do we have anything in writing? Do we have anyone on the telephone? Ms. Hanson, do we have anyone on the, online?
Not at this time.
Okay. And we're going to go to the board for any questions, comments, or concerns. Ms. Houston?
What kind of automobile repairs will you not be doing? And what, generally speaking, of course, I?
So basically, we want to try to buy cars and fix it the right way and put it in the lab for sale.
Okay. So you're buying cars, fixing, and selling them? You're not actually fixing, like if my car broke down and I came to your shop?
It's going to, it's going to be another, another mechanic is going to be doing that part.
Okay. Is it online sales?
Yes.
Online? And how many cars can you reasonably keep in your lot?
I think eight cars we can put in the lot.
You said eight?
Eight.
Eight, okay. I wanted to make sure you didn't say 80.
No, 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 no.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And that coincides with the site plan that they gave us, that there are eight cars there?
Where'd you see that?
Eight spots.
I missed that. I apologize. Thank you for pointing that out to me.
You're welcome.
So I just want to clarify one of the comments. Your car repair, is that you would be repairing other people's cars or just your cars that you're going to sell?
No, no. We're going to, the car we're going to buy, we're going to fix it up and put it in the lab for sale.
Okay.
The other person, he gonna, he gonna repair the car and separate.
Okay, so yeah, there is a mechanic you can bring your car to. And then on the other side, there's also where she's going to sell used cars that she's fixing.
Okay. Because the reason why I ask that question is you have eight spots on this lot.
Yes.
You cannot load this lot up with more than eight cars.
No, no, yeah.
Okay, everybody has a business, has to try to move your cars. You can't have any junk cars here. Everything has to be licensed, inspected, you know, four tires.
No, yeah.
Because we do not want to become a junkyard. Even though it's a very small lot, we don't want that to happen.
Oh, no, we, me either.
In and out, in and out.
Okay, good. We want you to thrive, sell cars, fix them, get rid of them.
That's right.
Move on. Any other questions?
Are you going to be doing inspections on cars?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
I'll go back to the public hearing. Anyone present wishing to speak on this application, please step forward. Ms. Hanson, do we have anyone online?
Not at this time.
Okay, I'm going to, I'll leave the public hearing. You have a question? Go ahead.
Are you guys a registered car dealership or a registered dealer?
Yes, yes.
You, can you present that certificate to us?
We can. We don't have it right now.
Oh, it's okay.
But we can come back and have, we have a certificate with the number and all that on there.
Please bring it to our clerk, Ms. Two.
Okay.
So that we have it on record.
That's fine.
Aaron, did you inspect for oil changes and everything, that there's separators or whatever is needed?
No, I haven't been there yet. They're going to, before they open, I'm going to have to go do a site visit and inspection, and I'm going to have to bring the building inspector and a deputy commissioner with me.
So, Mr. Chairman, on any kind of resolution has to be subject to and pass an inspection from the fire department?
As our resolution does state. I have a question on hours of operation. I just want to make sure that I have the right hours. I have, I just have Monday through, I believe it's Monday through Saturday, 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Is that correct?
Yes.
So you will be closed on Sundays?
Yes.
Great, okay. Going to close the public hearing one more time to the board. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Okay. On the resolution for Eva Flores, 32 North Street, car repair, car sale. Hours of operation will be Monday through Saturday, 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Be closed on Sunday. Subject to the City of Middletown DPW and the City of Middletown Fire Department inspections, approvals, and when necessary, approval of the Commissioner of Public Works. The applicant will obtain any and all necessary permits and follow the permitting process, codes, and ordinances of the City of Middletown, the County of Orange, and the State of New York, if applicable. In addition, if throughout any of the review process the project is deemed to require bulk requirement tables, the applicant will supply said tables through an architect or engineer licensed in the state of New York. Whereas pursuant to the City of Middletown Code, Chapter 475, Article 4, Administration and Enforcement, Section 475-53, Paragraph E, Subparagraph 6, unless work is commenced and diligently prosecuted within six months and completed within two years of the date of the granting of a special use permit, such special use permit shall be null and void. So in six months from now, if you can't get up and running, you have whatever issues you have, please send us a letter extending your approval.
Okay.
Or else you'll lose your approval.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you very much.
And get the certificate?
Yes.
To Ms. Two?
I can have that to her tomorrow.
That'd be great, because we have that for record. That'll be included in the resolution and just so, Ms. Flores will supply the proper certified certification for car sales and car repairs to our clerk.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome. I have to, you don't go. I have to vote.
Wade has to go to the vote.
Oh, oh. I'm so sorry.
You thank us, but wait, let us vote. I need a motion. Mr. Britto, I need a second. Ms. Houston? Discussion? Roll call. Mr. Madden?
Yes.
Mr. McCormick?
Yes.
Mr. Britto?
Yes.
Ms. Houston?
Yes.
Mr. Higby?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Now you can proceed.
Thank you. Have a good night. You're welcome.
And to you. Good night. And that is it for the agenda. Motion to adjourn, Mr. Britto, Ms. Houston. All in favor?
Aye.
So adjourned.